All right, we are back with the last seat of the day. Thank you all for coming in. Boulder City Council. So if we may, which side do you want to start from? Let's start my right, you're on the left. Go ahead and give us a one-minute bio. When my green folder comes up, that means you have 10 seconds left. Now, if you have anything to add on it, please do not go past the one minute. This will be on YouTube and on the Veterans of Politics. The YouTube will be posted to the Veterans of Politics Facebook page. You can go there and write volumes.
Hi, I'm Roseanne Rabiot O'Neely. And thank you, veterans, for having us come here today. I was born in Chicago, Illinois, in a neighborhood known as Bridgeport. Probably same as for the home of Richard J. and Richard J. Daley. More importantly, the home of Chicago red socks, which maybe a lot more veterans might know about. Came to Boulder City in 1995 and worked in business with my husband. We had a small restaurant and bakery. And that's where I learned the names of people in Boulder City. They would come to my restaurant. I was never a waitress before. I wanted to know who they were. I wrote their names on checks. And I have a website. And if it's okay to give you that, this way you can hear all those things. roseanneforbouldercity.com.
My name is Lynn Goya. Can you hear me? My name is Lynn Goya. I'm running for Boulder City Council. I've lived in Boulder City since 1994. I became involved in the community immediately. Became involved in the PTA, working with the schools. I've spent numerous hundreds of hours helping out at the school. Both my family and I have volunteered and been involved in the community. My husband is a Boy Scout leader. My oldest son is an Eagle Scout. My middle son is getting his Eagle Scout. We've put in probably at least dozens of projects at the veterans home to improve the veterans home. Spent thousands of hours within the community volunteering between my family and myself. And I feel like I really know the community. I'm a freelance writer, so I've written about Boulder City. I've promoted local business, which I think is really important. I've promoted kids. We worked to get a youth center going. Took me about two years to get that going. I feel like I can bridge the gap between some of the partisan, I don't want to call it... Some of the, it's not necessarily partisan, but some of the discord that's happening within the city and within the city council. And I feel like I can bridge the gap and work with both sides and really bring something to the table.
Facebook.
My name is Peggy Levitt. And I'm also running for Boulder City City Council. I came to Nevada in 1970. And I began my career in Boulder City in 1974. I worked at the Southern Nevada Children's Home for 20 years. And 12 of those years, I was the administrator. When that program was closed because of state budget cuts, I was hired in a management position at Child Heaven. And I worked there for eight years until I retired. I feel that a lot of the skills that I have developed in my career in management with respect to budgeting, strategic planning, working with people from diverse groups and helping them come together and make decisions based on finding common ground led me very nicely to the position at the council. I'm also a great supporter of the veterans. I'm prophesying that my grandson just returned from Afghanistan September because the Marines have served in Afghanistan. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rod Woodbury. Also running for city council in Boulder City. I was born in Las Vegas and raised in Boulder City. I've been Boulder City resident since 1978. Went through the school system there. And now raising a family in Boulder City. Seven kids who also go through, go to the schools in Boulder City. By profession, I'm an attorney. I have a practice of my own with a couple of partners in Green Valley. And practicing the areas of real estate law and business law. And I, the primary reason I'm running for city council in Boulder City is to bring a measure of civility and respect back to what I perceive to be a divisive council in the divided city right now on multiple different issues. The primary issues that are facing us out there right now are budgetary issues as well as bypass issues. And I'll leave it at that right now.
Good afternoon, Veterans in Politics. I asked some of the other candidates earlier how they were making sure that they were not only listening to the concerns of the people who are already active. Obviously, you know, we're here, we're engaged. A lot of the boards that candidates sit on and incumbents sit on, they say they know who's in the community, who's their constituency. And they do, for the people that are actively engaged. I'm a social researcher. And in my opinion, there needs to be some third-party objective analysis on what your constituents really want. Instead of surrounding yourself with people that are already so engaged that you think you know. So I'd like to know during your campaign up to this point or in the future, are you planning or have you done any work with UNLV Sociology Department or anyone down there to do some research of your constituency to see what they really think about the issues and not just listening to the people that are already involved in your campaign and people like ourselves that are coming to you? And you can start on the left.
I have not done anything with the UNLV Sociology Department or any departments at UNLV. We have reached out to other groups. For instance, the Board of Realtors has done a poll of our constituency out in Boulder City. And we pay careful attention to the issues that come before them. And you're right, it's difficult to find what everybody has on their mind. So we spend a lot of time on the ground, talking to people, going door-to-door. We try to hit every door in Boulder City. But, you know, I would welcome any opportunity to have a study like that. Wasn't even aware that that was a possibility.
Well, I agree with Rodney Akoson there that that possibility existed for us either, although I got my degree in sociology many years ago, that that was available for us at UNLV. But when you first asked the question, the thing that immediately came to mind was when you stand out in front of the credit union, which is the busiest place in Boulder City, you get a cross-section of the community. And I do that several times a week and talk to whomever will talk to me. And I feel like it's been very valuable for me to find out what's on the mind, the minds of Boulder City. And I get a variety of opinions. And I'm also going door-to-door in Boulder City. I haven't made all the doors yet, but I'm going door-to-door. So that's how I'm trying to find out what the people really think.
And can you state your name too?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Peggy Levitt.
We have listeners at home.
Hi, this is Lynn Goya. And one thing about Boulder City is it's not hard to find out what people think. Boulder City is very engaged in the political process, probably more so than, well, I know more so than New Orleans and Southern Nevada and very few other places in the states. People vote, they turn out, they're vocal, and they do talk. But I am a freelance writer. I've written about Boulder City for a number of years. I never go to a business or restaurant without asking, you know, what's going on? How's your business doing? Is it picking up? Is it slowing down? You know, what are the things? And we might have done that for years. So I think that gives me a pretty good background in that as well. You know, we're reaching out to people. I set up a number, excuse me, I set up a number of council outreach. I'm doing a business roundtable, a senior's and family roundtable. And I'm setting up regularly scheduled meetings at the coffee shop where people can come and meet me. So between reaching out to people and having opportunities for them to reach out to me, I think that I'm getting a pretty good assessment of what really is the most concerning issues for the citizens of Boulder City.
Roseanne Rabiot O'Neely. I was the Public Information Officer for the city of Boulder City for nearly a decade. Before that, I was the reporter for the Boulder City News. Before that, I was the director of the Hospital Foundation. And I was also a reporter for the Boulder City News. And I would like to say that you meet everyone in the grocery store, in the restaurants, as Peggy said, in front of the credit union. And I keep track of how many people do not want to vote for me. So there's a difference between perception and reality. And I had probably about 15 years of trying to get that middle. What's real? What's perception? What's reality? I wish I had the study.
All right, just for the listeners at home and for the panel members, the Boulder City Council seat, everybody, there are two seats open. But the top two that are up here, that get the top two rankings, most of most voters become, take those two seats. Is that correct? It's not correct. How does that work?
Well, there's actually five people running for the council. So four of us will go on to the general.
But it's four of the seats.
Somebody, two people could win in the primary.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah. But it's not, it's not council one, council two, or anything like that.
No, at large.
It's just, just the top two in the, in the general. The top two in the general take the two spots.
If someone doesn't win in the primary, okay, if someone takes it in the primary, two will advance for the next, for the one open seat.
Unless of course, there's a clear, there's two seats. Okay.
31% of the vote, two people still have to move on.
Any of us can, it leaves.
I'm going to ask the same question I asked for Mayor Laura Davidson, Treasurer of Veterans in Politics. Highway 93 is a huge issue because it goes through, obviously, it brings storms into Las Vegas. There's huge increased response times for emergency vehicles, lots of accidents, things like that, since the building of the bridge. I was wondering if you guys support a Highway 11 or expanding Highway 93? And what would you do to counteract the damage that it causes the businesses locally for you? Yes, sir.
Okay. Talking about it for a long time, finally, the state's gotten on board. I would support Highway 11 if they, if they use the proposed bypass route. But what we have to do now, and what I, as Public Information Officer and someone who has organized events and someone who has been on the Boulder City Tourism Commission, we need to have the city really buy into tourism. 70% of their traffic that comes down 93, which has to be improved to the four lanes, which will happen. 70% of the traffic goes that way. 30% stops at our businesses. We have to make a concerted effort to get those 30% to visit Boulder City.
Lynn Goya again. The problem with the Boulder City bypass is that it's Boulder City bypass. It's not really a Boulder City issue, but it's been labeled the Boulder City bypass for over a decade. And so people think that it's something that Boulder City can address on its own. And that's just not true. It's not, it's not I would leave and have control over. So yes, I would say the short answer, yes, I would support I-11. I do support that. I think that we've been moving more quickly since the bridge opened to make sure that people do understand it's not a Boulder City issue. As I talk to people around the state, business leaders and community leaders around the state and politicians, I've tried to make it clear that this is not something that only affects Boulder City and our ingress, degress to the town. 10% of the, 10% of the tourists that come into the Las Vegas Strip come from Arizona through that same path. And so it's a larger issue. Businesses need to be addressed. It needs to be safe. A lot of seniors are concerned with safety on the, on the bypass or on the current road. And it's something that is complicated and needs to be addressed.
Facebook.
I'm Peggy Levitt. The additional lane from the intersection of Buchanan and down 93 is already, is in the preliminary stage. It's being built right now. And that will help to alleviate the congestion on that part of the road. I live on the lakeside, so I get to see it out my kitchen window all the time. And that will help alleviate the congestion. But I do also support the bypass. I think it is needed. But realistically, it probably won't be built for about 20 years. But I think for 20 years, we'll do, we'll support local businesses and encourage businesses in Boulder City. So that Boulder City has that type of necessity. So people want to come there because of our, we go to town, we go to restaurants, and we do it all of the wonderful communities that we have in Boulder City. So I'm a big supporter of the businesses. And I think we need to encourage that and plan for that in the 20 years that we have before the bypass is built.
Rod Woodbury. I think we need to look at this in terms of a temporary solution and a long-term solution, or a more permanent solution. The temporary solution has been a long time coming and it's much too late, but it is underway and NDOT's starting to pay attention. And that's the widening of the lanes down towards the Husky and the hotel coming up into Boulder City. That's not, that's going to relieve some pressure, but that's not going to solve the long-term problem. The long-term problem has to involve a bypass around Boulder City. And it needs to be Interstate 11 so we can tap into federal funding. There's no way we can pay for it on our own. Another option that I think is good to get funding for this on the state level is Senator Hardy's idea that's been out there for a while, which is a public-private toll road type initiative that would allow us to tap into that. And as far as addressing business concerns, if we plan ahead, we can put the proper signage into place and get people into Boulder City that want to be there.
Yes, Don Wilbrecht, Veterans in Politics. Most of my questions have already been asked, specifically about the at-large. And basically, for the most part, you're running citywide. And my question is, is number one, what is the fiscal year budget for Boulder City? And two, what is the number one issue? And how do you plan on addressing it? Thank you.
Raise your hand if you don't know the budget.
Are you asking for the amount?
Yeah, the fiscal year dollar amount.
Yeah. I might, I was at the budget meeting. I think it's in the $35 million range. I'm not 100% sure. Does anybody disagree with that?
The budget for 2011, '12, the general fund budget is $25.8 million. That's general fund dollars. And the utility fund is $14.2 million.
I hope you know the answer, Don, if you ask the question.
No, I don't know. I wanted to know if they knew it, with the general fund. I wanted to know if they knew it.
You're the Public Information Officer. Where do we find that?
I retired.
Where do we find that?
You can go to the homepage, bcnz.org. Right-hand side, agendas. Scroll down to city council. Click on it, and it will bring up a list of the current draft.
Other question?
The number one issue. And how will you address it? I've already asked it.
Oh, okay. The number one issue, as I stood out in front of the credit union, everybody asked me different things. For me, the number one issue is the city budget. Because even though we've cut expenses over the last several years, we're still spending the rest of the money the same way. One of my proposals is to make a cut in the top management, top 15 senior management, make $1.7 million without benefits. So a 15% cut is like $254,000. We're talking about a debt management plan. But the leases have not come in. We don't have the money for the leases.
Lynn Goya again. There's three major issues that most of Boulder City are concerned about. It's the debt, civility, and the structure of the city management. And all of those, I think, are short-term problems that we can solve. There's a lot of changes that are going to happen over the next few years. We do have the solar leases, I'm a big proponent of green energy and solar leases and making Boulder City greener throughout the community. I think those are short-term, like Rod said earlier, they're short-term issues and long-term issues. But the real issue is what do we want to be in 10 years? And I think we need to reestablish where, what our goals are within the city, what the city wants to be, how we can become greener and cleaner, how we can address some of the issues like civility. There are, you know, we have some revenue coming in that's better than other communities. So we'll be able to address the budget and make sure that the people that we have in place and the management structure that we have in place is one that makes the city the quaint, charming city that we love.
This is Peggy Levitt. In my discussions with the many people that I visited with in Boulder City, I think the number one issue is the divisiveness that we have in our town. I had one man describe it. He said it's, we've always had fissures and cracks in town, but now it's like we have an earthquake and there's a candid violence. And I think because of this divisiveness, it's hard to get consensus on issues and move forward. So one of the ideas that I have is to get the community involved and have community forums and get more community input and see if we can get more consensus on, looking toward the future. As part of that, I think strategic planning is very important, involving the community in these issues. We do have a strategic plan in place for the debt, which is one of the main issues.
Rod Woodbury again. I would agree with Peggy that the temperament of the council is a big issue. As I talk to people, that's the issue that's important to them, is we feel like our council is unapproachable. We feel like if we go in front of our council, it's so adversarial and so polarized that we cannot make our views known. Because if we do, we're going to get attacked, we're going to get pushed to the side. And that makes for, it's counterproductive. We accomplish nothing when everybody's divided, when we feel like we can't participate in the political process. And not only that, but I think people over the hill in Las Vegas and Henderson look at the council out there, they look at the city, and they say, what's going on? How come you guys can't take care of business out there? And so I have to agree that that needs to be addressed first, and then everything else falls into place.
Lulabella Veterans in Politics, guape.org. I'm sorry, I forget your name. It's Roseanne?
Rabiola.
Rabiola.
O'Neely.
This question is for the other candidates to follow up with Don. They did not know the budget. Who do you blame? And what do you think it says about a group of people that are running for council who are all running, saying, budget, 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 we need to fix our budget, 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 budget? Yet, three out of four of you did not have the correct figure and did not jump to answer that. So again, why? And start from my left, please.
Okay, well, I hope I was the one of the four, the, Rod Woodbury, that knew. I think that we're on the right track with the budget this time around. It's...
I really hate to interrupt, but I know I get upset if I'm out there and I can't interrupt. So since I can, I will. The question again is, because you said 35, right? Which was 10 million. Yeah, I mean, again, 99.9% of the people that sit up there run, saying, we need to fix our budget, we need to fix our budget. All four of you did. Yet, three out of four, yourself included, did not have the number at their fingertips. So I can just simply say, why?
Okay, she has it on her legal pad, I guess.
No, she has it on her legal pad.
Absolutely. I think it's, I think it's important. You know, why I don't have it on my fingertips, you know, I, I was at the budget meeting last week. Can't really answer that question, why I didn't know it was 14.2 and how it's split up. There's several components to the budget. And it's divided into the utility fund and the general fund and several other funds. I do think it is, we're on the right track in trying to pay down the debt. It's relying heavily on solar leases, which are coming in, which don't...
Thank you. That definitely answered my question. We'd like to hear that.
This is Peggy Levitt. I also attended the budget meeting. And I agree with Rodney, it's hard to keep all of the figures in place. But I was going to say, I think our total budget, I thought, was 52 million, including all of the funds. But I don't know if that is exactly accurate. I've been more concentrating on the amount of debt that we owe and how much debt for each of, because we owe debt on the golf course, debt on the third straw, and then there's an interlocal fund debt. And so I've kind of been concentrating on those stuff. I don't have those figures at hand, I mean, quickly recall, but I did attend the budget hearing.
Hi, Lynn Goya. You know, I think there's a false perception out there that as soon as you say that you're running for an office, that you immediately have absolute knowledge of everything. And that's not true. I think all of us have been trying really hard to learn as much as we can about the detailed issues. To me, the number of the debt or the number of our budget is not the critical part. It's what, it's the philosophy on where we're going to get the money, where are the priorities, how are we going to address those issues? And, you know, the budget number frankly isn't as critical as trying to figure out how the budget's structured, where the money goes, where your, the bulk of your costs are, where the bulk of your revenue comes from. And, you know, that's relative. So I think that I've, I've been trying, and a lot of these issues, I've been trying to, you know, get the broad picture, try to understand all the different aspects of each issue, and then drill down that way. So, you know, when you go to the budget, you're going to have a finance director that'll tell you the number.
Another question wasn't for you.
Don Wilbrecht, Veterans in Politics. I just want to make just a comment, since I was the one that didn't initially ask that question. Part of the reason why I asked that question is simply a knowledge question. I obviously didn't know the answer myself. But I can just tell you this much, I'm a three-term former councilwoman myself. All four of you up there are completely credible in my book, and you all have knowledge. So I do appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That is all the time that we have for... I don't know. You got until...
You got one more question down here. And you can have them debate each other.
This was a question I had, Lulabella Veterans in Politics. The last two people that sat up there, I was asking them about, in Boulder City, there's no crematorium for veterans at the veteran cemetery. So what happens is the families of these veterans, if they want to get their loved one cremated, have to now pay $400, go to Las Vegas, North Las Vegas. At the time, it was brought in front of the council, it was an issue of air quality and pollution. Since then, there's been technological changes that allow for less pollution. How strongly would you advocate to get a crematorium put in? And how would you go about that? And you can start on the right, please.
A few years ago, there was, first of all, I would support the idea of having a crematorium. A few years ago, there was a business in Boulder City. The family is no longer there. There was lots of opposition to having a crematorium put in. And it was going to be near the veterans home. Perhaps that wasn't the, that wasn't the right place. Perhaps that wasn't the, that wasn't the right place for it. Perhaps a better place would be near the veterans' cemetery. But the, because I've been with the city and worked for the city for like almost a decade, I see how some city management aren't like real user-friendly and that's not a perception, that's a reality. I've talked to hundreds, thousands of people in Boulder City in the last 16 years in a lot of different capacities and we need to be user-friendly. If we can't even come to a solution about how to put in a crematorium, and that was only a couple of years ago, I'm sure you haven't gone to like beat-me-up Scotty kind of technology. I'm sure the technology was there a couple of years ago so that the city could have been accommodating to this great family that is no longer there because they could not even put in a crematorium. I mean, I don't understand why it's not possible. We need to be more responsive to the needs of the people in Boulder City and veterans are kind of special.
Hi, Lynn Goya again. Ten, twelve years ago, I worked really hard, a couple of years, almost full-time, trying to do youth centers in Boulder City and we did get it done. What I found was that you need to build a coalition, you need to make sure that people understand what you're trying to do, understand why it's important and build a coalition to get that done. That's something I would work with veterans to do on any of those issues you talked about. I write, actually four of my stories a week for Veterans News somewhere, a lot of veterans' issues that we can address, but the broader community has to buy in as well and we need to get the groups together. We have so many veterans in Boulder City and so many veterans in, you know, facilities, but I think we're a natural place to address some of those other specific issues that you're talking about. And in general, I think Boulder City loves its kids. We have the children's homes still, we love our vets and we'll work to address those needs. And I do think that the city has, as a county person, you do have an ability to encourage the city to be more friendly to different constituencies as well as businesses so that those kind of things can be addressed. So I'd be happy to work with you on that, whether I get, whether I get it off the ground.
This is Peggy Levitt again. I certainly would support a crematorium as well and I agree with Lynn. I think a logical place for it is in Boulder City because we have the veterans' cemetery and the veterans' home. And another thing you learn standing out in front of the credit union is how many veterans there are and how many people who do love veterans. It's a very patriotic city with a lot of veterans. So I think that we can get it accomplished. And the other thing is it would benefit a lot of other people, other than just the veterans. So I certainly would support that.
Rod Woodbury. I too would support crematorium out there in Boulder City. You know, when you're talking about public health issues, you're always hitting a sensitive nerve and that usually is a perception issue that you have to deal with, a public perception issue. I, I don't think a crematorium's a tough sell for the people of Boulder City because they do love the veterans, they have been dedicated to the veterans. We have a whole corridor from the cemetery to, to the veterans' home and, you know, Veterans Memorial Drive dedicated to that. And so I think it is, it's just a matter of convincing the public that it's not a public health concern and getting them behind that proposition and getting it built.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you.